Right, we'll kick off as they say then. Good evening. Monday the 19th, this is an extraordinary meeting to the council called specifically to discuss Budget. One of the Budget meetings. First item agenda, so good evening to you all council, good evening ladies and gentlemen. Apologies to the absence, so we're missing councillor.
Jean Denier, councillor Iredham, councillor Lucas.
So they've all got prior arrangements, all ready to make a meeting. So looking for a proposal to accept them, view on block from Dan. Seconded by Paul, all those in favour? To, was that Joy or was that Dan? Oh, sorry, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, four and against? One and abstaining? Well. So declarations of interest, members asked to declare if required any displaces. Has anybody got any interests? No, and if you have any changes of interest please. Item three is deputations by members of the public, we've got three members of the public here. Do members of the public want to make any comments or deputations on any items on the agenda?
Not yet.
We weren't aware that we were.
No, we were told to observe.
Right, right then. Good, the moment is now passed in that case, right. So item four is to consider initial views on the precept for 2019-20 and the detailed first draft for the budget. So basically, you're all sent a spreadsheet on the computers, on the... If you want guys, if you want you can send through the edges. So you can... So you can then see what we've seen.
All right. Come down Martin, sharing our shit.
So we're all sent this budget and basically what it is, the spreadsheet that's on the screen in front of you is the budget that we're going to be looking at is for next year, which starts in May?
April 1st.
April 1st, so this is from April 1st 2019 till the end of March 2020. So just to be clear on that, and what it is, Joy you want to ask a question?
Is it not similar to the one with the printout we've had for March?
It's similar, but what it is, the actuals, which is column C, has now been updated because there's been, the actuals have been updated with more realistic up to date figures.
There's been invoices coming in.
Yeah, but the key column that we're going to be looking at is column D, which is draft budget.
Is that sort of in the middle?
Yes, yes, it's one that's, it's called, on your paperwork it's called forecast. Yeah? So where yours says forecast, which is the right hand column on your spreadsheet, on this, on the computer, on the over projector, is column D, which has got the green heading against it. And literally what we do is we scroll down this spreadsheet, we take each heading in sequence and we identify if there's any changes. And then what happens is that down at the bottom, a little accumulator does, there's calculations being done in the background and a little accumulator works out the budget or the precept, which what we go and ask the council to charge the... Have you two finished talking? It's very disrespectful to have conversations. Well, no, I'll talk to both of you, I didn't invite you to speak councillor Brooks. So what we're going to do, we're moving down there, so has anybody got any questions?
I do have a question.
Shoot.
More than my question at the moment, but the first one is, as usual, we're not putting the correct information in time to discuss this at the meeting. The law very clearly says we should have all the documents three days before and I get smirked at every time I say it. That's why this council doesn't do anything properly. That is the law.
We've had it three days before.
No, it's been changed, it's been changed, so can I have a printout please? Because I can't follow that and this when it's different.
Can I just say you should be following the screen?
Yeah, but I can't put my finger across there and look at it properly. I'm sorry to be, you know, I'm also really annoyed because I joined the finance working group. No, it's different.
Wait, why is it different? Because this is the...
Because it's been changed.
The draft budget hasn't.
Draft budget hasn't been changed.
It's only the actual.
I know, but it makes it confusing when you're trying to...
Just look at the draft budget column.
Right, I mean if we can get you a copy, have you not brought your paperwork with you then?
I haven't, no, because the people who are not here asked us to move the meeting to an earlier time, which I find is unacceptable and they never come in.
I was just going to say, Martin might have an audience side, I couldn't say, I don't know, but I think it's all rather trivial. We all know what's going on, we've just been informed, you know, can we just not accept that? Or shall we take a vote on it?
No, no, we'll go with this, so...
But it'll be handy if I just have a printout, I don't care. Because I got confused this week, I asked somebody to help me, so I didn't get the information wrong and I was given the wrong information, but you know, so I'm trying not to...
The only figures that have changed tonight is the actual because we've had invoices in and I wanted councillors to have a clear 100% record of what we've spent to date. The draft budget column is, should be, is the same, that hasn't been changed, on column D.
And the key thing is, if people want three days notice every time the actuals change, that means the meeting will keep moving every three days without ever meeting. It'd be like moving the sands. So we'll go from the top then, so we'll keep it, I'll start off deliberately slowly and actually the RFO, which is the clerk, is responsible for setting this anyway, along with the finance working group. So number, the first one there is salaries, where at the moment the draft budget is £53,000. Is that right?
Yes.
Oh, okay, fine.
Sorry, can I just make a slight correction of what you just said about who was responsible for setting the budget? It's this council that's responsible for setting this budget.
Right, with the RFO.
Not with the assistance of the RFO, it's our responsibility.
We are trying to set it.
And you said with the finance working group, I'm extremely disappointed as being appointed on to that group that we didn't need to discuss this, so we could be spending a long time here this evening asking questions on things which could have been done, we should have a report for each change. We haven't had anything and that's, you know, clearly laid down in now that when there's any budget, any changes to headings or any figures, there must be an explanation given.
Well, I believe that all councillors...
And that would have saved a lot of time because like, I've asked various questions and they hadn't probably been answered. It's like, I wanted a position to know what our cash situation was now and what it is likely to be at the end of the year. Figures for our reserves, because we don't know. When Richard White left, this council decided to increase, while we're going on to salary, they decided to increase this salary so that if something happened, we won't go into details, but if something happened, that money wasn't spent. Each year, the salary since then has been put up and it hasn't been spent. Where has the money gone from the first year when Richard White left? When it was bumped up, something in the region off the top of my head, of around £21,000. That's the things that we should have reports to explain, you know, and...
Well, you're on the finance working group, you don't need it.
I was told to have a meeting with the clerk.
Right, let's move on.
It didn't go on, the salaries were such an issue, the salaries were £60,000. The budget that was approved by council last year went down to £51,000. It went down, it got reduced.
Yeah, but the previous to that, when Richard left, it went up.
It doesn't matter, we're not discussing that.
Yeah, but where's that money? That's why we need to note, if the public want a reduced precept, so there is money...
No, you want to reduce precept.
Yeah, and other councillors who are not here tonight say it. And as a council, I think we should be looking for a reduced precept. But if we don't know what money we're holding, what's that which money we've collected before that hasn't been spent?
I'm sorry, but the policy, the approach that is taken by this councillor has been for many years, is it goes through the budget headings and looks at what it requires to run the council.
But I asked if we could have the current cash position and our reserves.
So what is that, that is the...
Right, this was going to be mentioned, when we came to it, this is what I was going to mention, I have figures, but you, so it might be...
I say earmark reserves?
No. Let me just explain quickly, okay? Like earmark reserves is for things that, assets that the council owns that in the future will have to be replaced. You may not spend it for 10 years, but it's for things in the past or for assets that we own that will eventually need replacing. General reserves is what the council needs to leave in its account for unforeseen circumstances or whatever's to happen. As the printout I've done today, council at the moment has £341,968.
Is that reserves?
Yes, general reserves.
Then that's unlawful because we must not, unless we did, if we did...
Right councillor Brooks, if you don't, right, councillor Brooks. No, stop, stop now, because you're now breaching standing orders by continually interrupting. Now you need to let the clerk finish, you can't say, nobody tells me anything and then stand up and interrupt every time somebody speaks. Don't talk, let the clerk answer you.
You let me finish.
Let somebody answer your questions for change, it might help.
Right, as of now, and I did this this afternoon, the council has £341,968. And that includes, so predicted though for our spend, we are only in November, okay? So if you less what we've already spent, what we've predicted to spend up to the end of March leaves, it could be, I can't give you an accurate figure because we haven't got to March, but at the moment the general reserves are standing, my predictions are 100% at £96,000, okay? And council by law with now can have up to 50%, okay? Now the earmark reserves, which I was going to give out when we came to it, which is the £18,905, that was resolved by council last year.
But we should scrap that.
Well, you can't scrap the earmark reserves.
We can ask not to put earmark reserves because we might...
Anyway, so I have the balance, council resolved last year to take, to do earmark reserves and it was resolved that the earmark reserves would be, this is what you had in your pack last year. Okay, fine, okay, fine, but I was going to give this out when we came to it and here I have a printout of what money we're holding over the last few years that's gone into those pots. So for argument's sake, the state park at Cuts Close, at the moment we've accumulated £9,036, okay? So that will go up every year and I have a printout here of what each money is in that account. So that general reserves, if my prediction is right, will be £96,000, it could go up, it could go down, plus we have our earmark reserves.
That's funny.
Dan, you want to say something?
Thank you, sorry, can I just do a check? The £390,000 we've got in general reserves, something about, you know, £341,000.
No, no, yes, that's what we have in pot now.
Yeah, and then once everything, so once the liabilities are all taken account, we then got the £19,000.
Rest of no going, 17 January, February, March, five months.
So the £200,000, that's all our liability.
Yeah, that's all we've got, we've still got to spend, yeah?
Brilliant, thank you for still...
So at the end of the year, if everything goes fine, we don't have, God forbid, anything go wrong, we should have about £96,000.
Wonderful, thank you Rupert.
So the first line on here is, at the moment the draft budget to 1920 is £53,000?
Yes, so at the moment we've spent £29,399, this year predicted. Now the reason you might think, well, why, A, hopefully I should have my civil qualification, council resolved that I have an increase in salary, plus also Sarah was, she's opted into our pension, that's going to go up, so our pension payments. So that is why you might be asking why there's £5,000 difference.
Anyway, you got any comments on that, because there's some things that we can't change. So then we have to pay this to half.
Oh dear.
Okay, so, and the thing is, if anybody wants to come back, if there's something that you see and you're not sure, make a note on your papers or whatever you want to do and we can always come back and revisit it. Because what we're going to do, we're going to go through the list, because some of these things we just go, yeah, we're going to, you know, it's like doing your accounting at home, you're going to spend X amount and council tax X amount or whatever. Right, the next line down is rent.
I've rounded it up, that's not going to, we've got another payment to go out, that's because we pay quarterly. I've checked with the manageress of Victoria Hall and the trustees and the rent won't be increasing.
But that's been rounded to £12,000.
It will go up, it will be down slightly, but I've rounded it up.
So potentially it could be £11,730.
Yeah.
So happy to leave that a throw from here. NMDR?
I've checked with, it's, that's your business rates.
For the public toilet.
So the NNR is for the public toilets and our offices. I've checked with Rutland County Council last week and there will be a slight increase, they can't tell me what it will be, so I've rounded it up to £6,000.
Yeah, okay. If anybody, if anybody objects to any of these strongly, do say so. And I think that because we're going through this, we can remain seated, I think, if we want to talk about this. Yeah, right, sorry, utilities?
So office furniture, obviously we bought this furniture here that we sit around and I put in £1,000, it's up to you members what they think. We've, there was a budget of £2,000, we spent £924, so it's up whatever...
Office furniture, furniture, computer.
No, that was part of my question because obviously we don't sit on the screen, but here we've added on to that column further down, IT, new equipment.
Yeah, I put computers in there, because that's just the, I put office equipment, the phones could fall apart or a chair could fall, a table could fall apart, it's that kind of...
Yes, it's not an unreasonable amount.
Like we might need a fan or something, you know, that's office equipment.
Or a heater. Yeah, can you have some more heat in here please, it's not very warm. Utilities, is that covers?
I've put in £4,000, the reason I put in £4,000 is, the budget was £350 last, £3,500. The electric point at the car park is now becoming a lot more popular and...
We subsidise that one.
And we subsidise that.
I want to come in on that.
Because that was, was owned by council.
This council?
We've had it a number of years, basically become a lot more popular.
Yeah, I've got various handles on that one, so I'm going to come round and take on that one, I'll start with Joy.
Is she seeing, she's seeing through the street lighting?
Yes, sorry, it's all our utilities, yeah, everything, all our, anything that's electric.
That's the lighting in the park?
And it's water, yeah, so we've got, we've got the park, we've got water in the toilets, obviously in the electric in the toilets.
It doesn't include that lighting charge, RCC charges, which is... That's separate, that's 11, 16?
That's 11,000.
11,000 a year, that's a...
That's community lighting.
Right, did I answer you all right?
Yes, I don't see why we should be subsidising that because I know that outside the town, certainly outside Rutland and that's why it's more popular because they're getting subsidised. I think it's appalling that we're spending our money on other people.
Well, if you want to bring a paper to council saying that we don't, then I will welcome that.
I'll get it put on the agenda.
Could I do, I would...
Cover, cover and Martin?
Yeah, Anne has just said what I said, but I was a bit surprised that it had gone up when we'd asked the office to look at utilities and bring the charge down, but obviously the explanation of this car point, I can't find anywhere where they give it free. And the thing, and the thing can, this is given free, in Church Street, it's just plug in and you get these big Teslas and they're, and they're just eating the taxpayers' money and it's unfair.
Right, okay, well, the thing is, I mean, I hear what everybody's saying, but we can't do anything about it on a budget meeting. But if you want to bring an agenda item, you've now got somebody to second it.
We have the equipment, they're forward to be charged.
Joy, you want to come on that?
It was a screen, but it was completely free to be charged.
Yes, from what I understand, because I looked at this up and I went online and there is a piece about a company that put them in and it was to do with the shopping scheme, so you pay, you bought a car, again, when you got coming to Oakham, you could put your car in, get your charge for free. That's why you often see an extension lever at my house. Right, so at the moment we're leaving it at £4,000 so all those people can get more free car charging. Insurance?
Insurance, I spoke to our contractors, come to an end with Zurich, they are the main people for councils. And I have spoken to them, I will be obviously bringing it to council to agree in January or April. And I did, I've rounded it up to £6,000, it's going to go up slightly, but he only said like 3%. So I've just rounded it up and...
Give you a share?
Yeah, so I've just rounded it up, but obviously he hasn't given me a quote yet, but he said to me, looking at everything, it's only about 3%, 3%.
Yeah, but you should still consider that. Right, okay, all right, fine, everybody happy with £6,000 at the moment then? Postage and stationery, that's got, now we're looking at a year end of £1,500 or something?
Yeah, so I just, we can change that.
And what do we think, are they happy with it? Do you want it to be £2,000 or less?
I mean, we've lost the franking machine, so we're not paying out huge thousands in leases.
No, I'm not happy that this is proposing that we increase it.
What do you think it could be?
I have no idea and this is why I would have liked our meetings to speak with the clerk and we could have...
Well, it's not...
It's not going to increase.
Yeah, it's proposing.
Well, we've done it £2,000 year on year.
It's not, it was £2,000 last year. No, no, but you've spent, you've only spent £758, but our prediction, yeah.
But your prediction is...
So you can reduce this down to £1,800 if you want?
Where are we getting £6,000 from, that's the one of ours.
That's insurance.
Yeah, but somebody just said it on the left, but it's, it's too, it is, we, our situation at the moment is £758 and I would like, because we get in the council tax book for it, as being one of the highest parish councils, we have our own separate page, many people probably don't look at it, but I find it embarrassing, but because it's, we're over so much percentage on just administering this council.
We're talking about postage and stationery, what are you...
I know, that's all the administration costs, that's all we do, when you look at this budget, all we're doing is spending absolutely...
What do you want to spend on postage and stationery now, in £2,000?
It's postage and stationery.
Well, look, it's not difficult, we're predicting to do £1,500.
When we say to the clerk, let's cut it by £500, then she can't post anything, that's ridiculous. That's why we should have had our meetings.
We'll drop it down to £1,800, that way she's got it anyway.
But that's a good important time, Richard.
Daniel, sorry.
More dual checking, anybody that we actually put into the budget gets gratified and then doesn't get paid. Does that get added to the general reserve of then we can give that, like 50% of that back to the council itself?
Nothing goes back to county council.
You can hold up to 50%, what will happen is, all will happen is next year, not what we're discussing this budget for next year, when you next year, when you discuss the year after, you can use some of your reserves.
Right, the only reason I say so, because I agree with what Martin's saying.
You can't give it back, you just take less the following year.
Why don't we change it to £1,800?
One way of actually cutting the postage is if Alison doesn't post out the package, you all commit a crime.
I don't get it anyway, so I'm happy.
You're not allowed to do that, they've, legal requirement.
It has to go to, it has to go to a home address.
No, the only...
Or a dress.
Sorry, I was, I was still in point, the reason I'm asking, thank you Richard, is, okay, yeah, we are dragging a lot of this out, I understand that, and as Martin says, we've got very, very high, if we are going to increase the precept, that's ridiculous. But any money that we're getting over, I don't understand why we can't then, I know you're saying, we can give it back in, but surely that would depend on the next year's usage.
If we give it, if we give money back to RCC, it won't go back to the residents, which is why we...
So what you do is, so for argument's sake, next year, this is a figure I'm plucking out here, say you've got £100,000, you can, and you've got, instead of asking for a precept of £100,000, you could ask for a precept of £70,000 and use 30 of your reserves.
Oh, right, that's up there. We did that one here, we used...
Yeah, we did that too, you used £41,000.
We used £41,000 in reserves and we found the following year we got hammered and the precept had to go up by 17% and then we got slaughtered in the papers for it. So setting a cheap budget, thinking you're being good to people and then finding you've run out of money or could run out of money, you have to be careful, but you have to, you have to balance it, so changing that from £2,000 down to £1,800 should be adequate. So I would, I would say, I mean, yeah, so on postage and stationery that we put in, in theory we've now just knocked £200 off our proposed budget, all right?
And then on a swing, please just change.
Right, telephone and internet, we've budgeted £1,500 previously, we're looking at earning £1,100, we've got £2,000 in the budget.
No, we want £1,000 out of it.
Oh, sorry. There you are, go on, mate.
And this seems to go up, and I won't mention the company's name, but it is something the council has asked us to, asked us to, asked the office to look at in the past and I think that the time's come where we start looking at, you know, keep it the same, because obviously they're putting it up all the time and all their data and things, but we, we need to look at that, because we've been getting charges again, haven't we, for the excess data usage, which we shouldn't be getting.
The only, no, that's gone back down, because our NASDR, the only thing I will say is since that was approved, because that figure's always been over a number of years, now, don't forget, now we've got full, we've got full council and we now, you all have your own email accounts and that comes with the cost, we get paid charge monthly for all that. So, and then every time somebody leaves or somebody comes new, there's a charge to council, we... So when the original one was done a number of years ago, that wasn't taken into consideration.
But I think that it's something that needs to be looked at because like, for instance, the email charges have to kept her safe, but say, let's just say Sarah, it's something Sarah could do. Instead of paying £50 or £60 every time the councilman leaves or arrives, Microsoft Office, Outlook, whatever they call it, is something that somebody should be able to do in-house.
Ministry of Defence.
Yeah, we shouldn't be using another company, they will charge us that.
Look, I think what we do is, we tend to use, we tend to use another company to administer our IT offering because we've never had previously somebody in the office that has had that capability, because it was only recently we brought in personal... So the thing is, if we never get through the budget, if we're going to talk about how we should be changing, how we operate as a council, we're meant to be looking at figures and the figures only.
We want to do a paper marketing or set up a working group to sort out the term finish.
So do we want this to be £1,500, is that what we're forecasting?
Well, we have to, I think we should be...
Subscriptions is...
Right, subscriptions, I don't know when that £500 was set. Subs, subscriptions, we only, we used to, when Richard was here, we used to have a magazine, I think it used to be £12 a year, but we haven't had it for a few years, so I haven't paid for it.
That's the SLLCC now?
No, no, it's not, no, it's not, it's a separate magazine for just clerks, it's nothing, it's nothing to do with our legal stuff. The stuff of the SLCC and our data protection and all that, I put in other professional fees.
Right, cool, right, okay, so basically...
So the subscription was for a magazine.
So we'll leave subscriptions at zero and it could be that maybe the finance working group next year when they meet will decide to bin some of these headings, I don't know, but we don't know, so worry about that. So next one is expenses and travel?
Yeah, very low, the reason you might be thinking, well, you've only spent £5, so you only were spending, don't forget, next year if we have new members, people will want to be, might charge their travel to go to Anstey. That's the only reason I've kept it at £1,000.
Where's Anstey?
Left, the other side of Leicester.
Okay, can somebody arrange a trip? So do you want to leave that as £1,000, because we have got, we have got a new, what's it next year, elections and there could be all new set of people around the table, right?
Now, this is where I get the issue, where we've spent £5 and we predict we're going to spend £65,000 and we took £1,000 from the taxpayers last year, so that leaves some money in the reserves.
Which we could use at the end of this.
But then we're asking for £1,000. We should be asking for £1,000, we should be deducting the amount we've actually spent.
But we are predicted, isn't it, Jim?
Yeah, but this is for this forecast, the £1,000 is what we will be asking for the precept, anything that we agree in that. So this is where I have issue with a lot of the headings, is that we don't take into consideration the surplus money and we should.
Well, this is originally designed, so you would have put in...
Say we have £900 left over.
This, I'm just predicting.
In theory, we should be forecasting on the budget for this precept that we want £100 quick.
Right, so you want £100 in there, Joy?
The reason we have surplus is because I didn't claim the perpetual money to go past you because I combined it with the...
Having asked, having asked, we're talking use and if we have elections in May, there will be lots of chances.
I know, but we have the money, but we're asking for money. I wouldn't say mine is stupid.
But the, the money to ten new councillors. It, as I say, a round trip to Ansey on the government, forty-five p, tax-free, is twenty pounds and twenty-five p, so, so, so.
That's like ten, ten pounds.
The, 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 the.
Right, hang on a minute, hang on a minute, children, can I just point out?
That's quite rude.
Yeah, well, that's because you're being very rude in talking over the chair and talking between yourselves, this is a council meeting, you should conduct yourselves like councillors. You should also be talking about the budget, not talking about, oh, I want to go there, I want to go here, what, you've said a hundred pounds.
Because we have nine hundred pounds.
No, I'm Martin, I can be speaking, and he runs the council.
This is getting stupid.
Come on.
Um, to be honest, I think this is getting a bit silly, but anyway, um, if there are twelve new councillors, that's a possibility, isn't it? Because it's twelve of us, right, anybody that's any worth being on the council would have said, right, twelve people, three cars, three twos, a six, what is it, twenty pounds?
Twenty pounds.
Well, three twos, the sixty pounds, nobody would charge them going in twelve separate cars, surely to goodness, if they're coming on the council, they're coming for the glory of the place, not to be earned.
Paul?
Um, say a bit of money, could whoever trains people in Ansey not come here?
They have tried that, but the uptake hasn't been very good in Britain, because they have to do it with X amount of people who've all had travel, uh, even though they claim their own expenses.
It would be cheaper.
That's probably, yeah, Dan? So I just, uh, come back to let her know, if you're going to do that, you probably need to change your insurance to business insurance, so.
No, 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 let's, no, no.
Sorry, reference, um, going back to this, um, I don't think we should be claiming any of that, if we've still got the nine hundred and thirty-five pound in there, then. Well, it's not in there, this is, that, once last year is last year, you have to put in a figure, if you think that only five pounds is going to be claimed, or sixty-five pounds is going to be claimed next year, you should be putting sixty-five pounds in, you can't leave it as blank.
I propose two hundred and fifty, sorry.
You can't leave it as blank, and then if somebody goes, can I claim expenses, and I'll claim it from last year, so it doesn't work, we don't leave the money after one side, it wipes clean. So the money that goes in the house is going to be accepted.
Into the general reserves.
Yeah, and then that's why we need a col, we should have a column saying that we carry that forward at money owed.
Well, we don't, this is what we're working with. Can I read the money just a little bit higher? You want it to be five hundred, um, I've got Anne saying two fifty, and Martin said one hundred, and Zoe's going to bring cents for the meeting.
So, no, just correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding was, we need to set a budget, because we need to be clear and transparent in saying that we are going to need training costs. And I think it's wise to err on the side of caution and have a higher amount, but in terms of getting the money back from the general reserves, that doesn't come in this column, does it? That comes at another point. You can't, you can't put in the col, column, we're setting a thousand pounds, but eight hundred of that is coming from reserves. We know it is, so when constituents talk to us, we can explain that, but we can't put that in a column, that can't be worked out mathematically.
But it could actually go along.
Right, well, we're not, so, um, Anne, you said two fifty?
I think two fifty is absolutely, it is, because there's another column for the training itself, this is just for the.
This is just to get there.
Yes, I proposed two hundred and fifty quite strongly, because.
Quite strongly?
Yes.
Daniel said five hundred.
I'm happy with two fifty.
Right, okay, so should we change it to two fifty then?
Yeah.
The post, the post, right, yeah, we don't need to bear on it, I mean, yeah, this is a general sense of.
Yeah.
And the thing is, we can always come back and revisit it towards the, you know, somebody go, oh, actually, I just thought something.
Right, training last year was two thousand, again, I've put in two thousand purely on the basis of what we just talked about.
So. That's the situation at the moment.
Which is now.
Does anyone think your training?
My training was, um, last financial year.
Right, okay, come on.
Seems a lot, but I don't.
Well, if there's, if there's twelve new councillors, you want to go to Ansey, that's, what's a course, a hundred and fifty?
No, it's, it's less than that, but if you want to go on more courses, and also if I want to go on courses, they, they, they range between about thirty-five to seventy.
So are we leaving two thousand, or does everybody want to reduce it to two thousand?
If you want to reduce, I just put it in there because of new councillors, but you said.
Did you say about three or four, sorry?
They're between thirty-five and seventy pounds, that's per person.
That's three, three courses for those people, no, it's not.
Two thousand, well, leave it at two thousand, we can always come back and revisit that.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, well, it, as I say, if we've taken, um, you know, half an hour to get through that, what about about half a week? And these are the easy ones. These, these, these are the, these are the standard, these are, so.
Hi.
Uh, the councillors in order.
Um, you've got to take into consideration, we get charged for our external audit, that's in the region, and that came in at seven hundred this year. We have to pay for our internal auditor, which comes every, twice a year, and he's forty-five pounds an hour, plus also, council resolved that our financial package we get done every year, when they spit out all the figures. And that's three hundred, so that's why I left it at three thousand.
Anybody want to change it, are they happy with that for the moment?
Okay.
Legal expenses.
Legal expenses, I, I put in again, obviously it's up to you guys, I put in at three thousand, bear in mind, we still haven't had, there's still, um, that, we don't know what, whether, what, if, if. If the Rutland House Community Trust for argument's sake, might not get resolved this side, this side of April.
Yeah.
Um, with, others, there's still other bits and pieces.
Okay.
I think, sorry.
Yeah?
I, I would hope that with the Rutland House Community Trust, that they would be paid the legal fees, because that is more.
Fifty fifty.
That's not my commercial piece.
If the lease is fifty fifty.
Well, I'd like to have a lease like that.
We'll get you one, put it paper, and we'll get.
No, but that's the serious thing, if you go to any estate agents and look at any commercial thing, you pay, but that's why landlords are rich, but we're not, because we get basically nothing.
Well, not that bad. Well, anyway, so the lease is fifty fifty, so, does anybody want to change it?
Go up and down.
I would leave it at that, because they might end up, they might end up having to do some legal things.
Yeah, I think we will.
On that project, it's huge.
Oh, sorry, that one, yeah. Right, I T.
Now, I've, I've, I've cut it up.
Because?
Because.
New equipment.
New equipment, um, our computers are getting quite old, also, members have talked about.
Changing providers?
Changing providers, um, so.
Okay, any comments from down the table on that, this?
I just.
Dan? In all fairness, we've got the subject matter experts sat there, when it comes to the computers, I'm happy to sort of bow down to Washington for that one.
Ooh.
You don't need to now, well, can we revisit, shall we revisit salaries now? So, well, the thing is, when we get to the end, and we see what the pre, when we see what the total is, if we think, actually, can we try and save some more money? We can snip that goal, but.
Yeah, but it's still around two, we've still got another month to go yet, as in another time, I mean, on that.
Right, so that was, that was I T, wasn't it?
Yeah.
And that was three thousand, uh, so, other professionals, then?
Okay, that is, um, you've got one thousand two hundred for our, um, H R, but he, he might put his prices up, I haven't spoken to him, but he's been that price for a number of years. Um, it's things like our L S, our, sorry, our N A U K.
Yeah.
Actually, I think I've probably made a bit of an error there, because I'm just thinking now, saying, there's, um, we've got, yeah, there's, there's one thousand two hundred, we've got now, that's over a thousand. Plus there's our S L C C, there's our O, O S, um, our data protection, so really, um, perhaps, maybe three thousand.
Three thousand? Funny enough, I've put three thousand in on what she, I was working on, yeah. Well, can't take one for the I T re-joins. Yeah, um.
I mean, the, the only reason it's quite high on actual is because, um.
We've taken additional legal devices.
We've taken additional legal advice.
Yeah.
So I think three, yeah, members have.
So truly, so you'll put it in a, what, you want two or three?
No, I think we should have. We need to, we need more than two.
Put it in at three, and, and, because, I mean, because in, in theory, on where we're finishing at year end, bear in mind that we only had a budget for what looks like fifteen hundred, and we overspent by.
Well, there, there, well, that's, well, that's all we spent already.
Yeah.
And.
We've already doubled our budget on that.
And we've still got six hundred, we've still got, um, not, there's still more money to, for, um, for our human resources chap.
Okay, no advance. Okay, put in at three, so that, that brings your subtotal on that, that particular set of columns in, is that ten thousand and fifty pounds?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so the figure down, so there's the figure, changes at the bottom, so it'll, it'll change.
Just which figure, just.
So, so, so that's the figure at the moment, that's what our budget is.
Which one, the twenty?
Twenty, two thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
Five fifty-three.
Two hundred and fifty-three thousand and six hundred and two.
And then, so, and then if, um, with last year, say you go, that at the moment, we're on it.
Now, let me just point something out here, because everybody's saying they want to cut down on what we spend this year and what we did last year, well, if we go by year end, that was looking at two hundred and sixty odd thousand, yeah? Whereas at the moment, we're working on a draft budget to put in a preset of two hundred and fifty-three pounds, so we're already looking at offering savings to the public, potentially of a considerable amount. So, you know, we are being, part has been proven when she's prepared this year, let's move on to that, on contracts and grants, grant, making the contract.
Yeah, and we've obviously got, we've obviously got a three-year contract with them, um, they do do.
Additional work.
Additional work, um, as in, um, they'll do, this time they've had to get rid of.
Accessory, yes.
Accessory trees, they, they're very, they're very efficient, and they, they're very good at, but we do ask, I ask them to do additional work for us.
I can't, yeah, I'm happy to maybe leave that, well, we can't change the, we certainly can't change the twenty-two five eighty.
No.
Um.
Because we have a three-year contract.
Floral displays is.
That's what we've been, fourteen thousand was in the budget, we actually spent ten thousand one hundred and forty-two, um, so I, I, all I've done is put in what we spent this year, it's that.
Right, um.
And whereabouts it goes for, sorry.
These are the things that are hanging baskets.
Hanging baskets.
Hanging baskets round the channel.
Yeah.
Ones, ones that everybody complained about, and the hanging baskets in the, on the fence line, right, that's close.
So, can I, can I just say, that you might be thinking, that's a lot of money for a few plants, but they, that was including a water contract.
So they weren't all watered?
No, uh, Martin?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a bit puzzled where we get the figure from, when we know, you know yourself, I asked why we hadn't tendered, and you said, well, nobody has asked.
We had tendered.
No, no, Martin means as in.
Oh, this is.
This year.
No, that, so, we, we need to tender, and, um, I would hope.
But the trouble, the trouble is, Martin, I know what you're saying.
I have a feeling that it's going to cost us more money, but I would hope that when we do go down the road and doing the baskets, we look at it really seriously properly, because for two years, as it's been put, no water in. We had, um, night's yard where they were just left to die, we put them up on private property in the opticians, which I don't think consider to be in town. And we, I, I'm just a bit puzzled where we've come to this figure, when we hadn't tendered, and it almost hit me with the pressure of the word.
Well, I, I just, I, I based it on last year, because, because we haven't gone out to tender, I couldn't put in.
But it's a drop, and I can't see when things go up all the time, but, but it's going, I know for some reason, I think they gave us less money because it wasn't agreed, didn't, wasn't it, when they did something wrong?
Who did it, who did it?
Not, probably, probably not good to say that.
Joy, want to say something?
I'd like it done properly.
Joy?
I, um, I thought they did a good job, I think we need to look at some of the things that we, that we ordered and see that they're in the right places. The question with night's yard is, they water first thing in the morning, and night's yard is closed, so we need to have a look at that for next year. But, you know, we, we could, we can learn from the mistakes we got wrong this year and get them right next year.
Well, I find it frustrating that those people, same as the opticians, they put their own baskets up, and our contractors go and bin their baskets, and, and we put them up, and they're just left to die, it's just, and they cost a lot of money.
This, well, it might be, because obviously this is a contract which has expired, this is part of the contract that is done to assist the Oakham Bloom, conscious of that, that we've got Oakham Bloom representatives in the room. Um, so, at the moment, we've been paying ten thousand pounds roughly a year, eleven thousand pounds a year, whatever, on the hanging baskets. The, the council, it can allocate a budget of eleven thousand pounds, but they're second going to have to make sure that somebody could have to bring a paper and decide whether they want to go ahead and renew with either new or the existing contractor, before that money can be released into baskets anyway. So the main thing is, did the council prefer they want to allocate eleven thousand pounds into what could be potential floral displays in the town centre? It needs to be kept as simple as that, so, leaving it at eleven thousand pounds.
Chairman of the basket, who's got the, who's had the contract.
We haven't gone out to tender yet.
No, for last year.
Well, it was, well, last year was party.
All right.
Well, it's a firm that does hanging baskets.
Chairman.
We've got no.
Can I just make a, a sort of point of order about, about asking for a paper, it's not for councillors to prepare tender documents and things for the council. When they run, when they run out, it's the office that should be coming to the council and saying, do we want to re-tender, how are we going to do it? It's not for us to sit there and say, there's put a paper in, because we might want baskets.
It's not, that's why they don't want baskets.
No, but that's why it has to come to council from the office, contracts are, are, I don't want to sound horrible, they are the clerk's responsibility, so it should be the clerk or her assistant who bring a paper saying, by the way, council.
So you've got all the twenty, the better, then, right?
This is, this is run out, what do you want to do? It's not for us to sit there and decide what comes on that situation.
Okay, fine.
So I'm going to go.
No, I'd bring a paper, say, do you want floral displays, but at the end, I thought there'd be like a working group, like Christmas work room, that then would go out.
But that would come from that request.
Right, well, it is, right, okay, well, let's, let's stop talking about how, how things we think should be doing right, this is, by, so, Anne, it'll be, what, on the meeting at the end of the month, Dan, do you want to say something? Um, mainly just the, the way you must explain it there, I think I'm getting the grasp of this now, the paper, I think of it as, you bring the paper in, and that gives the clerk options to look at, or the clerk can suggest options to you. Wouldn't suggest that we're actually doing any of the tendering work, we're just, yeah, we're just providing, we're just providing information for the council, and if the clerk, you do that, well. Okay, I'll just try to. Right, so we put eleven thousand pounds into the forecast for next year then, yeah?
Yes, yes, definitely.
Right, uh, councillor's giving?
Oh, yes, I, this, this is, this is, this is there, it sits down here, not on the screen.
Oh, sorry, you, oh, right, yeah, I was, ah, right, okay, so did we want to do it off your screen, or rather?
I'd rather do it off my screen.
Right, okay, well, it's the next one into yours, so let's go back to everywhere then.
Yeah.
Because otherwise we'll confuse the humans in the world, including them.
So, we're now at toilet maintenance.
Toilet maintenance.
Um, now.
Oh.
What's that, the public's pride?
Yeah, that's a different.
We'll work from a screen up for now.
Yeah. Um, the toilet maintenance, we've got a three-year contract with A M Cleaning, however, we also have a contract with P H S that gets rid of all this sanitary stuff.
Products, yeah.
And hand wash, um, air fresheners, blah, 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 and also as well, I also put through to, toilet maintenance, if we get a blockage, or the hoist, we've now got a bunch of the hoists.
So twenty thousand pounds is the total amount that we need to forecast, yeah?
Yeah.
Covers all those things.
It's the statistic in there, which we saw come up recently.
Yeah.
I think toilet boxes, it's just the one.
We're going to have the church street, yeah, yes. We can't afford any more, it's twenty thousand pounds, so, it's not cheap.
Yeah, it takes the.
Takes the, uh, takes the biscuit, doesn't it? Flat or snacks, then?
Right, can I just say, grants, um, we've already had, the office has already received a request from Citizen Advice, forty thousand pounds.
For next year.
For next year, and I've just rounded up to three thousand.
So, there, there is a point, previously, for the benefit of those that have been recently new to the council, Oakham Town Council used to have an allocated amount of money, it was, I think it was around about eight thousand pounds a year, where any organisation could approach the town council and go, can we have some money, please, to do whatever? And as long as it met within the L R L A C guidelines and giving grants to the public, or whatever it might have been, we would give money away. And, and one of the pots used to be owed to the Citizens Advice, I don't know, but then we binned it, when, when, uh, there was a, an element where the council was trying to save money, and it seemed to be inappropriate, for whatever reason. But then we decided to give, I think it was Martin brought a paper once, where we gave a, a substantial amount of money to C A B, or City A R, or whatever they're called, and now that has stayed in there now. Alison's put it up to three thousand, do the council want to consider having a grant pot made available and start issuing grants again in the future, in which case that would be larger?
So many papers.
And, yeah, so, for instance, yeah, Zoe's got a paper requesting some items, which is only three or four hundred pounds, but if that was every year, that money has to come from a pot. It was for the Red Box project.
That, that paper will come to you.
Yeah, okay, right, Martin?
One of the issues we have with, unfortunately, the councillors, we had this, and I won't mention his name, but the rule is actually say that councillors cannot apply for grants. Um, and, and that was one of the reasons as well, without going into the details, was a lot of competition over how grants were just dished out and never really followed up in the past. Um, we, I, I would like to be in a situation where we could support things, but I do have the fear that we don't follow, and I will say Citizen Advice as an example, as an organisation that I went and had.